Soggy Sedgwick County Day. We got a full agenda for staff meeting today, so let's get to work. Tom, take it away.
Thanks Chairman. Good morning Commissioner. We have three things on the agenda today, but before we do that Nicole has to introduce. We got a new guy that you're going to want to know, so.
Good morning, everyone. Again, Nicole Gibbs Strategic Communications. I wanted to take a moment to introduce Brandon Zinner. He is our new Community Relations Specialist, which will be dealing with the media. Stephanie is still with us, but she's just in a different role in the Communications Department. So. Brandon comes to us with a decade of media experience as a media journalist and anchor, and he is here to try this adventure. So Brandon, you want to come?
Brandon, welcome aboard bud. You're a sports guy, right? Needed sports?
I am a sports guy, background in news and sports. So yeah, Brandon Zinner, I come more than a decade of experience in news. I've been here in Wichita with KWC News for over three years. I'm excited to join the team, anything I can do to support you guys, relay our mission out there. I'm here to help, so don't hesitate to reach out.
Well, welcome aboard Brandon. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trifecta of news media, right? Stephanie brought up that we have KWC, we have CA Center. So we've got it covered. We've got to go steal somebody from the eagle and we'll be, I guess. Three things, three things this morning Commissioners. First is the Steve is going to kick off the Adult Comprehensive Plan. Or how we spend our state money and give an annual review of our state corrections dollars. That's item number one. Then Steve will stay at the podium to talk about a new community corrections funding formula that we all find a bit disturbing that I want him to cover today. Which will then move us right into our legislative platform discussion, which Tommy will get up and talk about. So Steve, one at a time here, a comprehensive plan first.
Hey Steve, good morning. Welcome.
Hey, good morning Steve Stonehouse with the Department of Corrections. Every year, as you know, we present to you a comprehensive plan for adult and juvenile corrections. And a part of that plan has certain goals that we try to meet as an agency, an organization for adult services and juvenile services. We're required to. Report that to you and then turn that into KDOC by October 1st. So you're going to hear from Lori Gibbs, the Deputy Director of Adult Services and Mario Salinas, Deputy Director of Juvenile Services about how they did on their goals. And then we'll be asking for a signature from the chairman that we talked about it. There's no other action needed, just as it's just an update on how we did on our goals.
Okay. Hey Lori, welcome.
Well, good morning Commissioners. I'm Lori Gibbs and I'm the Deputy Director of Adult Programs and I'm going to cover the fiscal year 25 Comprehensive Plan as reported to KDOC. So the goals that I'm going to cover, these are goals that were written with guidance from KDOC. There's certain guidelines that they expect our goals to sort of be tailored around. And two of the goals, two primary focus areas of our goals in this plan were related to client supervision. And specifically what we were looking for here is that ISOs would target clients scoring high or very high in one of the following areas. These are considered. Based on evidence, the big four categories, which are indicators of client success or failure on probation. So these areas that we're looking at here. Are antisocial behaviors, antisocial associates, use of leisure time, antisocial attitudes, antisocial personality patterns. So when we're saying that we're targeting client scoring in these areas, these are risk assessments that we complete on our clients upon intake into our program and that at regular intervals. The idea is that by identifying the categories where clients score high risk, high needs, we can then tailor. A supervision plan that addresses those needs. So the second goal is tied to ISOs targeting high risk clients through well-developed case plans. So case plan. Takes those indicators from the assessment and helps us define kind of a roadmap for supervision. So if they score high in certain areas, we're going to. Target those areas and surround, you know, the client supervision with with services. And so that's what we're doing in that second goal is developing a case plan and then placing clients into programming that specifically addresses those issues. And on the surface, those those things seem pretty simple, but there are a lot of barriers that are in play related to this population. You think about the categories that we've identified up there, by the very nature of the individuals that we supervise, they're high risk, they're high needs, they've got long criminal histories. So there, a lot of them are going to score very high in these areas. They have a lot of lack of pro-social supports in the community. And so as supervision entity, we're looking to supplement. The support network that they have that is not necessarily pro-social. We also have faced some barriers in the past and currently in terms of time constraints and lack of available resources in our community. I'll speak a little bit more to that. In future slides here. So some of the progress that we've made on those previous two goals is we've. The department has developed a continuous quality improvement team and this team works alongside our supervisors to help them become. The best coaches and the best entity to provide feedback to our staff on those assessments and on those case plans. So we've done a lot of work. On what we call inner rate of reliability. In these assessments, there are dozens of questions that are asked and what we're looking for is that regardless of who completes the assessment. There's inner rate of reliability, there's fidelity to the tool. So our quality improvement team has assisted in. Work over the course of the last 18 months to help us gain really solid inner rate of reliability related to the tools that we use. KDOC also has provided a compliance report to us that helps us ensure. That we are meeting the deadlines associated with these assessments and case plans. We've recently changed our curriculum, our Cog Skills curriculum we've used since 2008, the same curriculum that was called Getting It Right. We recently moved to a curriculum called Courage For Change. And this curriculum specifically, there are eight books in this curriculum and each book coincides with one of those high-risk domains identified in the assessment. So an ISO does an assessment. Somebody scores high in the area of antisocial companions. They can be referred to a very specific book that helps them work through the challenges. About behavior change. So that curriculum is onboard and new for us this year. We also revised a variety of our policies to align with best practice. We've spent a lot of time in terms of our performance evaluation goals, ensuring that those tie to the work that we're doing in our, not just in our comprehensive plan, but in our strategic plan. So our goals have moved from things that were more about checking the boxes and being counting to that qualitative, skill-based work with clients. And then we've also done a lot of work in terms of enhancing our training strategies. The other goal that we've spent a lot of time on this year, I've touched on this briefly, is in staff development. And I've shared previously that when I started doing this work back in 1996, it was very different than what it is today. It was very compliance-based. You had a list of things that offenders were expected to do. They showed up to your office. You said, have you done this? Have you had law enforcement contact? Have you made your payments? And then, you know, you moved on from there. The work is very different today. The work is very much rooted in behavior change. And that requires a very different skill set than the skill set, skill set that that we had to have. And Steve and I have joked, we couldn't necessarily be ISOs in this day and age because it is, it is very different and very different skill set. So in that, to that end, we've spent a lot of time investing in our staff and ensuring that they have the training that they need to use the tools. That are evidence-based. Some of the barriers related to that is motivating ISOs to challenge themselves to use these new skills and to improve client skill building. You know, it's, we've shared before that our counterparts and other agencies are not necessarily required to do these same. Set of tools that we are. And so you have staff who are supervising extremely high-risk population and in addition to that, there is a plethora of. Expectation from KDOC that we adopt these evidence-based tools that take a long time. It's not a 15-minute office visit anymore. By the time you do. The tools, the homework assignments that KDOC expects us to do, you're talking about an hour-long meeting. And that is, you know, takes a lot of time, which means that staff are spread more thinly. And the progress that we've made in this area, we have spent a lot of time. So one of the challenge, the huge challenges related to staff development and onboarding staff. Was that it would take anywhere from nine to 12 months for KDOC to train our staff in the things that they expected us to do in order to supervise the population. And we felt this was really unacceptable. We, when you have new staff that you've hired, yet they can't supervise the population, that means that staff who've been around. Have higher caseloads. And so we were able to persuade KDOC to allow us to become adjunct coaches, which means that. We sent our supervisors through pretty in-depth training to learn to do what KDOC had previously been doing for us. And that is, you know, certifying our staff in those assessment tools. Doing the basic case management training. So we are building our foundation with our existing staff, our existing supervisors to be adjunct coaches. That means. Where we previously went nine to 12 months before staff were trained, we've cut that down to about three months by doing it internally. And again, I mentioned the CQI team, they've played a huge role in helping us sustain momentum and in coaching our staff. They are instrumental. Instrumental in observing staff interactions and reviewing our assessments to make sure that we are, are targeting those high-risk domains. And so without them, it would be very challenging for us to support the skill development at the rate that we are expected to do that. Also audits, case reviews and individualized coaching are areas where we've, we've made a lot of strides to develop staff. And last but not least, our favorite slide. So KDOC, there's a state statute and mandate from KDOC that we achieve a 75% successful completion rate or. A 3% improvement from the previous year. I've been before you in years previous to talk about, but this is especially challenging for our agency, given. The concentration of high-risk offenders in our community. So you can see from the numbers that in state fiscal year, we neither met the 75%. Nor did we increase 3% from the previous year. I can share, as I did last year, that in my history with the department, we've never. Obtained a 75% successful completion rate. We, while we've understand that this is an important expectation from KDOC, we also believe strongly that we have to balance. That successful completion rate with community safety and always err on the side of community safety in terms of the population that we serve. So we all, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. We also are not strong supporters of the fact that this is not necessarily an accurate indicator of the success that we have with clients. I know we're going to talk about that a little bit more as we walk through the funding formula, but we would love to see KDOC adopt different measures of success. Something like recidivism perhaps, but we do feel that. This number is pretty representative of what supervision has looked like in our agencies for a long, long time. Now, that being said, in the first two months of the fiscal year, so for July and August, we are at a 66% successful completion rate. And in August, our rate was an all-time high. I asked Tom, one of our administrators, to check the math multiple times because I didn't believe that we had a 76%. Successful completion rate in August. Whether or not that is, you know, a fluke or not, I don't know. We'll see what that looks like in the coming months, but. I would like to think that the things that we're doing related to the use of these epic, epic tools, the referrals to programs like Cog Skills, Batters Intervention, our in-house. Substance abuse, the use of residential and worker release. I'd like to think that those things are making a difference and whether or not that is the case. Remains to be seen in future months, but we are. Looking forward to having discussions with you about the funding formula and what our, our challenges are moving forward. I'm happy to answer any questions about this report in particular, if there are any.
Okay Lori, thank you for this, this rundown. Any questions on these specific items here?
Thanks Lori. A couple of questions on the, what is for, for us to understand, but what is this a successful completion?
So successful completion, there are a couple of categories that, that are captured by KDOC's definitions. So somebody who makes it to the finish line of their probation successfully. So they've, they've reached, if they had an 18-month probation, they've made it to the end. And we can stamp their case successful and they complete. There is also a couple of other categories that KDOC counts as successful. A judge can close a case and although we wouldn't necessarily say they were successful, given the amount of time that they have left on probation, a judge might say. They're close enough. And so they could, that judge could say that they're successful. Also counted in this category and potentially impacting our August numbers are client deaths. Those are considered successful closures for us and we had five client deaths in August, fortunately. They don't go to prison. Yeah. Not going to prison is successful.
And we heard from Judge Rausch at our last cabinet, that he balances community safety. So if somebody doesn't go to prison.
He may still send them to prison just because of community safety, because of what they're on supervision for. So that's important to remember that. Success is not sending people to prison.
Yes.
And my other question would be, so how many, I see from another report, there's how many community corrections in the state?
Oh gosh, 30, 31.
So are these numbers here on this slide available from these other 31?
Yes.
Is that public information then?
We, it's, it's information that we can provide to you.
Okay. I assume, you know, Johnson's a big one and us, and then there's all scattered around.
Yes.
That, it might be interesting if we could see that.
Yeah. And we've had that discussion in this, in this meeting and years previous too. I can't explain. How other people reach that number. I just know that in Sedgwick County, we're going to balance heavily public safety against that success rate.
Okay. And my last question, it might be covered in something else. How many of the clients? What, how many clients do we serve that are outside of Sedgwick County that come in from?
On average, about 300 at any given time. You're talking about courtesy supervisions, individuals who were convicted in a different jurisdiction and are transferred to us for super. Between 250 and 300 at any given time.
And how many Sedgwick County residents, clients are there?
Our ADP is about 1100 now, so the remainder of that would be Sedgwick County cases.
Thank you, thank you. Good question there. Just to reiterate, we're serving about 1100 people in these programs here in Sedgwick County.
Yes.
Of that 1100, you say between 250 to 300 are outside of, they're, they're not Sedgwick County residents we're serving, they're being sent here.
They're being sent here.
And we're serving them.
Correct.
Okay. So 20% roughly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Go ahead. You, you received one of these clients from out of county and they come here and they fail in Sedgwick County. How is that counted by the county they came from and how that county here is falling?
They, yeah, it's a good, it is a good question. If they're successful, under our supervision, the jurisdiction who sent them gets the credit for the success.
Well, that seems to be backwards, doesn't it?
Sure does. Sure does.
I, I, I can already tell you this meeting is going to be really difficult for me. That's just plum nuts. To think that you're doing the work and you're not getting credit for returning people to a successful completion.
Right.
And then, and I guess it'll be another conversation that we're going to have about what, what the state uses. As a carrot and a stick with these numbers, but 20% of the people that are coming through are outside of our county. If you completed, if you complete them to success, you're not getting credit for it, but yet.
They're not, they're also not counted against us if they don't complete.
Well, I guess that's the other side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It's nonsensical though, either way.
I agree.
Hey, can you say something about?
A jurisdiction may close a case and we would find them unsuccessful, but they would get closed and they're still living in our community.
Yeah. So sometimes what happens is a jurisdiction will send a case to us and maybe we have a case ourselves. There's a Sedgwick County case and there's a Reno County case. Or even farther, farther away. So we supervise our case and we supervise their case. We're going to, if there's an instance where somebody's not successful on their probation with us, they're going to close out. And that's going to count against us. And a lot of times what will happen is the other jurisdiction will close the case, but not count them unsuccessful. Which is also not terribly fair.
That, that's a, that's an incredibly important point, I think, but I think one other question I have of the 25% or so of these individuals we're serving that are, that are not Sedgwick County residents that are being sent here. Why are they being sent here? Why are these counties not handling their own residents?
Well, all that an individual has to do is indicate. Some existing tie or a desire to have a tie to the community and that courtesy transfer is expected to be. Accepted by the receiving agency. So it could be that they have previously had ties. It could be that. There's a lot of resource in the community and so the, you know, ISOs from the sending agency feels strongly that their needs could potentially be met better there. But they're supposed to demonstrate a tie to the community in some way, family or some history in the community where they have better. Stability and access to services.
Okay.
Pretty easy to do, really. If that's what you want to do.
Community as far as, yeah, I'm certain that you could.
Commissioner House. That's really kind of my question as well, you know, so you're, so you're saying that really the, the, the choice to be in Sedgwick County. Comes from the, the, the client, if you will, that's being served, not from government. They're not making a choice. The government's not making this choice in any, anyway. The client makes the request and the, and the government concedes to that idea.
I, I'm not saying that the, no, not necessarily. I'm saying that the, the client may indicate they want to be supervised in Sedgwick County because that's where maybe they have family support or. Employment or, or something, but an ISO can also make the suggestion potentially that they. Be transferred to Sedgwick County to have their needs met more comprehensively.
Without the client making that request, ISO can make the recommendation anyway.
I would, I would hate to say that that wasn't the case on occasion.
We need to troubleshoot this a little bit and get a better understanding of this because I, I'm suspicious that that's more, more often the case.
Yeah.
That I don't think the, the clients are choosing, again, Sedgwick County's wonderful, I love it here, but if you're in Johnson County and you're being transferred to Sedgwick County. Is that a choice of the client or is that a choice of maybe the ISO making that encouragement, if you will, selling the idea? I think we need, need to understand exactly how that's being done. Because I, I'm suspicious that there is a, an intent to talk them into it and encourage that as a, as a way to handle the case. If that's happening, we need to know about that, right?
I, I don't have my budget book with me. So could you tell me maybe high level, what, what is the funding stack of how this is handled versus? What I really want to know is local property tax dollars, what percentage of local property tax dollars are going to fund these programs versus grants? I, I'd really be curious and if we're using local property tax dollars to help serve. Clients that are not from Sedgwick County. I, I don't expect an answer on that. And if we can, somebody can get me that answer. You can come up to them.
The last time we looked at it was about $6 million, I think that, that came from Sedgwick County, all sourced from the county to match. We'll talk about it in a bit, but to match what the state gives us about five, in the county putting up about six.
Okay.
So a portion of that in theory goes to non-residents.
Did that math thing last year or?
Yes. Yeah, you'd have to, I'd get paid more if I could do math, but it was, there's, there's an amount that goes to non-residents.
That's helpful.
Want to piggyback on Commissioner House's comments a little bit. My experience when I was on the Wichita City Council is whenever. A, a lot of folks were sent here because they believe we have more resources in the area than other areas, so.
Yep, I think that's true.
Okay, I'm, this conversation is going to continue. So Lori, thank you for this. Thanks for the work you do. Mario, talk juvenile.
Morning Chairman, Commissioners, Deputy Director Mario Salinas for Juvenile Programs. As Steve stated, every year we present our juvenile comprehensive plan year-end outcomes. And so I'm here to. Review those with you for the SFY 25 State Fiscal Year. Every year we present these outcomes to you guys for final sign-off and approval. And that is after our Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board has reviewed and approved those as well. Team Justice is our Juvenile Advisory Board and they reviewed these outcomes on August 1st of this year. The first program I'll go over is our Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center. This program serves youth ages 10 to 17 that are arrested in Sedgwick County or that are issued. An agreement to appear or a notice to appear. So far on average for state fiscal year 25, we had to average 145 intakes per month. This is slightly up compared to last year where we were averaging about 130 per month. So a slight uptick in intakes at that facility. And our mission is to connect youth and families with services to limit involvement within the juvenile justice system. So. Just as a bigger picture here, while we get 145 intakes per month from local law enforcement or those NTAs and ATAs. About 75 of those, 75% of those youth are released back out in the community. So we only have about 25% of those that are actually detained for a charge. But of all those youth that come in, our ultimate goal is to provide an intake and an assessment. Identifying the risk factors that they may have and then make those referrals for those youth and families so they can get the services that they need out in the community. Of the youth that we have that come into intake, 100% of those youth receive a referral for service if they don't already have services set up. So. If there's mental health or substance abuse issue identified and they're already receiving treatment, then we would make the referral for them to continue with that treatment. But if, if they do not already have services in place, then we would initiate that referral for them. We would set the family up. With, with the referral to the agency and then follow up with them to make sure that, that they are receiving those services so they don't come back to us. So of those are 100% of referrals that were sent out for those youth, our goal was to achieve a 67% initiation rate or higher. In SFY 25, we met that goal at 70%. So 70% of youth and families actually initiated services to that referral that we. Had made for them. Some action steps to make this happen were intake staffs and refer. Follow-up letters to the youth and families to remind them of, of that referral. They call the service providers to see if they've engaged in those services. And then just constantly making sure that we have good communication with our providers on the community. Goal two is similar to what Lori said, the use of evidence-based practices at JAC. It's a little bit different because we don't have as much time with them. But we do use brief intervention tools or bits. To get buy-in for the youth and families and as well as motivational interviewing. And so those practices are continued. To be coached with our staff to make sure that they're utilizing them and then supervisors are evaluating how many of those bits are completed per month and providing corrective actions for staff that, that aren't making those goals. So. For SFY 25, we completed a total of 608 bits, evidence-based interventions. Goal through, goal three is to routinely assess individual and team performance through monthly performance indicators. After-action reviews, random audits and all staff meetings. This is achieved through management and staff. If we have an incident at JAC that's elevated and results in a use of force or any of those types of things. We always have after-action reviews with the team to make sure that we're following best practices, that we're improving in certain areas that we identify. We have had training enhancements for de-escalation techniques as well as our. as well as our continuing quality improvement team. They provide technical assistance, trainings and um, other work to our staff to make sure that we're uh, providing the best service at the juvenile intake and assessment center. Uh, the other program that falls under J I A C is our immediate intervention program. This is more or less a diversion program for youth that first enter the system. Uh, referrals are received from the district attorney's office as well as identified if they come into J I A C. Uh, they'll send those to the DA's office and then they will send them back to us if they are approved to um, be enrolled in the immediate intervention program. Uh, the ultimate goal is to provide immediate intervention to limit juvenile justice involvement. Uh, the program is sixteen weeks long. We have two intake officers that provide uh, supervision to these youth. And um, ultimately, the goal is to divert them from the juvenile justice system by providing them with services and resources out in the community. They also utilize motivational interviewing um, and the bits tools uh, for their supervision. And our goal was to achieve a success rate of ninety percent or higher. And so we met this goal successfully uh, where we had ninety-six percent uh, successfully complete the I I, I I P program. The other goal is to encourage youth and families to participate in I I P. This is strictly voluntary, uh, they do not have to engage. And so we make the, once we get the referral from the district attorney's office, we make that initial contact with the youth and families. We provide them with resources, uh, follow-up to those youth and families that aren't engaging in service. And then if we are having a really tough time, we'll get the multidisciplinary team involved to try to troubleshoot, troubleshoot any concerns or issues that the family may be having. So maybe it's transportation to and from um, services or they just don't want to engage. And so uh, we have those meetings and ultimately if they do not engage, then we notify the district attorney and they have the ability to later file charges on those youth that do not engage. But overall, um, uh, we've had great success in the program. Uh, but it is uh, very limited as far as um, the level of supervision that we provide. The last uh, larger program is the juvenile field services. They're currently housed out of the Munger Building and they provide juvenile intensive supervision. So youth out in the community that are moderate to high risk. They have ISOs that monitor them as well as provide services and follow up with them out in the community. They also supervise the youth that are sent to the uh, Kansas Juvenile Correctional Facility to provide case management services, discharge planning and uh, whatnot before they are released from the correctional facility. Uh, when they are released, they're considered on conditional release or parole and on the adult side. And they provide that uh, community supervision to those youth out in the community as well. So uh, their first goal is to work towards obtaining a four-to-one incentive to response ratio. Anytime uh, clients violate their uh, probation, it's, they receive a V L R or a violation level response. And so the goal from K D O C is for us to have a four-to-one ratio. If a client violates, we provide that response, but we should be providing them with four incentives to every violation. Uh, we've continued to improve in this area. In S F Y twenty-four, we were two-point-five to one, uh, where we're at three-point-three to one ratio uh, as of S F Y twenty-five. Um, and there it shows we had two-hundred-and-forty-nine violation responses and of those, we had seven-hundred-and-fifty-one incentives. So it's not quite the four-to-one, uh, we're continuing to make progress in that area. We've asked uh, youth that are doing well, you know, what, what, what motivates you to stay on track? As well as providing different types of incentives. We've had uh, watch me grow, random acts of kindness. We did a summer bike giveaway as well as themed events around like sporting events like March Madness and whatnot, where they can be involved, receive awards um, and incentives to continue to do well and stay on track. Uh, this is a picture of ISOs working with clients. They were able to uh, plant a succulent and the theme was watch your succulent grow while you, while you are growing and making positive changes for yourself. So uh, they were all able to uh, be engaged, participate in that event and then take um, a plant home with them with that uh, thought in mind to continue to, to watch yourself improve and uh, see success in, in the things that you're doing positively. Uh, the goal for two uh, J F S is to increase face-to-face engagement with community stakeholders. This is not only uh, K D O C uh, goal, but also one of our strategic plan goals is to engage community service providers, get them involved. We've seen great success in having partners helping us do this job. Um, I know Commissioner Wise just went to a graduation for uh, the One Heart Project. That's another community uh, provider that actually works out of our evening reporting center. So uh, we're working to um, increase the number of providers that are helping us with this mission and goal to reduce recidivism and increase success. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we were engaged with those providers because if we know how the clients are doing at treatment, then we can follow up with that and make sure they're staying on track. So this goal was met. We had one new provider come to staff meetings, let us know the work that they're doing. And then we were able to engage and make those referrals uh, to youth out in the community. Um, the next goal is to make appropriate referrals within thirty days of receiving uh, supervision. So it's important uh, to make sure that we get them engaged in services immediately. And so we have this goal of making sure they're referred and are following up with those services within thirty days. Uh, to make that happen, supervisors reviewed all new files within thirty days to ensure referrals were submitted and uh, followed up on. And of all, all those referrals and file audits that were completed, we had a hundred percent of eligible youth um, received referral within that first thirty days. Uh, ineligible youth would be those that are, that have gone AWOL or been detained um, within that thirty-day timeframe. And just a big picture of why all these goals are important. Uh, this shows our successful closure numbers for ISP. We're at seventy-nine percent, C R and J C F. We're at seventy-eight percent with a total average of seventy-nine percent success rate. And compared to this time last year, um, for S F Y twenty-four numbers, we were at sixty-eight percent success rate. So uh, continue to make great strides. I think the family engagement, community partners is huge. Um, having those wraparound services instead of just having uh, J F S staff tell them what to do and how to do it. We have other partners out in the community doing that. And so ultimately, our work is most important by reducing recidivism. And so only ten percent of youth on ISP committed future crimes. So ninety percent of youth did not commit future crimes on ISP. And altogether as an average, so that's consistent where we were at in S F Y twenty-four. We were at ninety percent did not reoffend. So um, ultimately, success rate's important, but the overall outcome to make sure they're not coming back is
Yeah.
most important, so um, that being said, that's all I got.
Mario, good work. You and your team, obviously, I think that number, that ninety percent number is, is the number that we should be measuring and so good work. Just one quick question before we open it back up. Did I read that correctly, that altogether in all program, we have a hundred and sixty-four juveniles? Is that correct? When it was a, all clients, a hundred and sixty-four total, was that correct?
Are you looking at, that's, that's a total of closures.
Okay, so how many total juveniles do we have?
The total juveniles being served on community corrections through J F S, we probably have close to about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred on any given day.
Close to three-hundred. And right now we have this week, the numbers that I was given was we had thirty-nine kids that are in J D F.
I think we're at forty-four today at J D F.
Forty-four today, how many do we have at J R F?
J R F, we're at fourteen.
Fourteen.
With the capacity of sixteen because we closed off a wing for the evening reporting center.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, total continuum to include home base, which is our pre-trial program for juveniles. I think they're sitting at close to forty. And then, like you said, forty-four at J D F and fourteen at J R F. So uh, with the total capacity of a hundred and eight. So if those alternatives went away, which is what we don't want, um, we could have pretty full facility overall.
J D F, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I see it. Questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Just um, that last statistic there that you've shared, talking about ninety percent. But that's, that's relevant to what population, those that finished the?
Those that have finished either on J I S P, C R or at the correctional facility.
Okay. And so that's not a hundred percent of the population though, is that the seventy percent of the population?
That's this, that's, so those are the youth that actually successfully completed.
Right.
So if the youth unsuccessfully completed, we don't want to measure our success on those as far as recidivism because they were unsuccessfully closed.
I'm just looking through the total population, so those that, that did not complete their programming, if you will. How many, how many of them did not complete programming?
That would be the other twenty-one percent that did not successfully complete programming in the program.
And, and, and if, if I understood correctly earlier in the slides, you talked about seventy percent of them except, if you will, a program recommendation, if you will, but thirty percent that don't.
Right.
Uh, what happens to that thirty, so that thirty percent represents what, how many?
So I think you're referring to the immediate intervention program, which is the state's um, diversion essentially. Um, other counties across the state did not have a juvenile diversion where Cedric County does have a juvenile diversion. And so the district attorney runs our juvenile diversion here in Cedric County. So those cases that are released without prosecution, um, those kids are referred to our immediate intervention program. So if they do not engage in that referral to the I I P program, then we notify the district attorney's office and then they can have, they can ultimately end up filing charges if they want to on those.
That's what I'm interested in. So I think, so that thirty percent, uh, what's the number of juveniles that are represented by that thirty percent?
Go back to the giant slide.
I think it's probably slide twelve.
The J I A C or the?
J I A C goal one.
Okay.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the other thirty percent, they just wouldn't have engaged in, in that referral that was made to them.
Right, what, what I'm saying is what? What happens to them? How do we count for that? How many, how many is that thirty percent? And, and are we, what statistic are we capturing that in? I mean, so it was like we're just writing them off, so to speak, when we don't talk about them anymore after the slide.
Mm hmm.
So there's thirty percent of the juveniles, I, and I would, I would venture to say these are some of the most difficult juveniles. The ones that don't want to participate in these referrals, if you will, they're, they just were unwilling to do so. So the question is, how many is that? What are we doing with those folks? And yet I know it says you, the DA potentially can charge them, but is he? And I guess I'd like to know what, what is truly happening to these thirty percent?
So if, if a youth comes into the juvenile intake and assessment center, they're either brought in with law enforcement or they're brought in through an N T A or A T A, which um, the school and law enforcement can give that to them to report on their own voluntary basis. Um, we make the referrals to the youth and to the families, but ultimately if they do not engage in those referrals, there's, there's nothing we can do at J I A C or the courts can do because they, they may or may not have a, a case filed against them. So you're talking about seventeen hundred intakes of those seventeen hundred intakes a year. Seventy percent of them that have, have not already had a service set up that had, we've made that referral to them actually engage in the service. But outside of that, there's nothing we could do except provide more follow-up, more engagement for youth and families. Ultimately, I think what we find is that once the event's over, the, the, the family doesn't want to engage. They don't want anything to do with us if they don't see a case being charged against them.
These aren't all criminal, correct? Some of these.
They're all brought in on criminal charges, but doesn't mean necessarily that the case, that a file, a case is filed against them, correct? So if maybe they had um, destruction of property at school or something, they would be brought in on that misdemeanor charge, receive the referral if we identified a substance abuse need or something like that. Um, but ultimately, if they aren't later charged for that crime, then the family's like, I'm not going to do anything because I don't want to do anything, I don't want you guys involved in my life.
Just doing the quick math, it's about five hundred or so juveniles a year that, that just. And then the, the forty-four that you have at J D F right now, are these they're awaiting charges or what's this, why, why are they in J D F? What's going on that's causing them to be in J D F?
Um, they're at J D F because they have a, a pending charge or maybe a warrant or something like that that has to be reviewed by the courts essentially, so.
Their time there is limited, is that correct?
Not pending disposition of the case. Now, if their, their case has already been sentenced and they're on a probation, then they have that time limit. So say if a youth has um, already been found guilty of a charge, is pushed, placed on a juvenile intensive probation, that's when they have that forty-five days maximum detention days. But if they're waiting for the court pending a charge, there's not a time limit on that.
You know, I understand because of these being juveniles, that some of the records are difficult to access. I, I'm wondering if there's anybody doing analysis on how often some of these kids go back into the front door of the system? Because we just, we just had them here last month, but they sent them back out and they come back in. Again, I know we talk about recidivism on the kids that complete these programs, that's, that's a great stat. But for the kids that are not doing that, what's the recycle rate of those kids coming back into, to the system with future charges?
Um, I don't have the data with me today, but we do track that data. We have the number of intakes and the number of youth that are repeat intakes based on number. If they come in two, three, five, however many times.
Since I have you here, uh, can you please uh, if you have the data, can you let us know about how many juveniles in the, say, the last one complete year that you would have data on or in our system for possession of a firearm?
Are you talking about they come through J I A C?
They're, they're, they're brought in through J I A C, they caught them with a firearm, presumably, presumably illegally possessing a firearm.
Uh, I just.
They were sentenced, they're brought into J I A C and then something happened to them. How many kids do you bring in in the over a year?
Um, I would say we have about a hundred and fifty to two hundred that are brought into J I A C and detained because their crime was committed while in possession of a firearm.
And of that population, how many of them? I, I'd like to break that down, you know, this is off the cuff here, so if you don't have answers, that's fine. But to break that down and to talk about what do we do with those specific population, how many of them are accepting, if you will, some type of a recommended uh, program and complete a program and never come back? Versus uh, maybe they, they reject any type of program, they take, take a little bit of time in J D F and they're released into the community. We're not tracking them any longer and we maybe see them again in the future and we don't. So yeah, that's the population that's, that's causing a lot of discussion in this community right now. And uh, I'll just make a point here, y'all heard the numbers, uh, H B twenty-three, twenty-nine deals with this. And I think right now, for the vast majority of these kids, we don't actually charge them with anything. And there actually is no consequences, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Most of these kids either get nothing or may, may go into one of these programs, but I think many of them do not. And so please speak to that if you would.
Um, we, we, we did have a weapons intervention program a few years ago and we had zero percent engagement participation in it. So I think that's telling of itself. We had this upfront for the juvenile intake and assessment center. Any youth that came through on weapons-related charges, we made that referral and tried to gauge the family into that program. And we served zero youth.
And you said up to two hundred or, I think that's what you said, up to two hundred that were committed some type of a crime in possession of a firearm. How many of these kids were just captured, if you will, or caught with a firearm that maybe were not committing a crime? Is that part of the two hundred or is that addition to?
Well, they committed a crime in the essence of it's a misdemeanor to be in possession of a firearm. It's more difficult when you have to drill down by type of an offense if it's not related to that specific firearm charge. And based on the research we've done specifically for this bill, about two hundred um, of them had the weapons-related charge, but.
Do you guys retain the firearm or do you guys go, maybe talk to the parents, maybe, maybe talk about? I mean, what, what happens in terms of the family? If it's a family-owned firearm or whatever, what happens to, what, what's the follow-up to that situation?
Well, every youth comes in, in person to Bill three, six, seven, every youth receives that referral and risk assessment. And so all youth that come in on a firearm related charge are detained because we have a override protocol for the Cedric County that the judge has put into, to order. Um, so anytime those cases are released without prosecution or warped, we make those referrals for those services to those programs. But we don't have a number to say how many.
I'll make a statement, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the vast majority of these, these youth frankly, have little to no consequence of, of what they did. And again, I, I don't, I think Senate Bill three, sixty-seven actually is what caused a lot of that to happen, which is why this bill is necessary. So I can't, I can't bring this up again, over and over again without, I want, I want the world to understand, there is a problem here. I'm an enormous advocate of the Second Amendment, law-abiding citizens to carry guns all the time. That's my position, but I don't think juveniles are, they're possessing illegal firearms uh, is, is sensible. And I think our system does not adequately deal with these children. And so people want to know, why, why are we having all these juvenile shootings in the community? Well, now you know. I think our system is broken.
Commissioner Maister.
Yeah, quick follow-up, thank you, Commissioner, for your questions and comments. Going back to just one thing, uh, the seventeen hundred intakes a year. Going back to just one thing, uh, the seventeen hundred intakes a year. So that, that's five or six, are we open three sixty-five? You take?
Yeah, so we have a total of thirteen staff that run the juvenile intake and assessment center twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Five or so a day, is that?
Yep.
Wow. And, and you were, I think Commissioner Howell asked, and maybe you have that, how many of those are repeat offenders?
Uh, we have the data. I would say most of them are repeat intakes that would come in on a regular basis.
Most?
Mm hmm.
Over half?
I don't have the data with me, but I can certainly get that for you.
Wow. Okay. And then this, this presentation that we've had from you and Lori, this is required every year, is that right?
Yeah, so we receive grant funding through the Kansas Department of Corrections and part of that is to present our goals every year to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board as part of our grant application. And then at the end of that, to present the outcome, so you guys know how we're doing.
Okay, so if I can ask again, I'm not sure what, what I want to see, but I, so all the, uh, corrections departments have to do this. So, uh, I'd be curious to see what, uh, Johnson County's numbers are related to the adult and the juvenile. If, if that, this is a public information, so I assume.
It should be subject to an open record request.
Do the same thing.
And just to note, I mean, while we're going to talk more about the state funding formula for adult.
Correct.
It's ultimately going to come to the juvenile side as well.
Yeah, okay.
And as you can see, we have really good outcomes and I would hate to lose money. Um, because we have a lot of services in place and providers in the community that we work with. And so uh, we provide transportation to a hundred percent of the kids at the Evening Reporting Center and that's a huge benefit and barrier to the youth and families because they can't get to and from group and program. So.
Okay.
Well, Mario, you're going to get our best shot to make sure that doesn't happen. So while, while we're talking about the funding formula, why don't we talk about it? And figure out exactly, good, hey, good job, Mario. Thank you.
Okay, um, some Steve stuff, just.
This is a matter of logistics. You approve the grant at the beginning of the year, that with the state fiscal year. They did the comprehensive plan, you approve the grant, they receive the money. They do the year-end presentation use that you are aware of the outcomes. Um, the next step is for document to come to the chairman for his signature to acknowledge that this occurred today and that you guys have seen the data. And then that signed document will go back to KDOC from, from here, uh, by October first.
Understood. Thanks. That's helpful. Thank you.
If we've did, we've done it just one more, we've done it different ways. Sometimes we just gave you the report and then he makes us come and do this.
Um, on the funding form, Steve, would you mind doing it from there? Well, you've probably got no pressure. There's probably about twenty people watching this from the state legislature right now, curious what, what's happening at KDOC. So if you can help us.
Sure. Steve Stonehouse again with the Department of Corrections. So annually, um, Community Corrections for Adult Programs is funded um, by a grant from the Kansas Department of Corrections. In current year, twenty-six, which started in July, we receive five million and change. I believe you have this chart and some information I sent to you yesterday. So that money it comes to us in a block grant through an application. It's really from three different sources. One is DUI funds. One is a block grant and one is behavioral health funding. So you bra- braid those three together and that's how we get the five million dollars. The DUI funds comes from money that, um, offenders pay and every county gets a portion of that. Now, Kansas Law has about three different statutes that deal with funding formula for adult corrections. Up until recently, Kansas Department of Corrections has said they do not know how the funding allotment has been made. It's been just an amount of money. Um, they've been working since about twenty twenty-four to come up with a consistent and transparent and equitable funding formula for those three pots of money. So last December, we were notified that there was going to be a change and we were given some numbers where our cut was going to be approximately fifty percent reduction in this. Um, we had some pretty strong, um, pushback. Yeah, I asked for some changes in the formula and KDOC listens and made some changes. We've worked with them unsuccessfully to, to change the formula much. And then we were notified, um, last week that we would be looking at a thirty-seven percent cut or approximately over two million dollars from our KDOC grant. The formula that, that has been developed was developed by, um, the Community Corrections Advisory Committee. This is a statutorily appointed committee of community corrections directors that, who worked on this formula came from the Northwest Community Corrections. So that's like the Northwest, Northwest Corner, um, the fifteenth, seventeenth and twenty-third Judicial District, Reno County, which is a twenty-seventh Judicial District, the Eighth Judicial District, which is Dickinson, Morris, Marion County, um, Johnson County, which is the tenth, thirty-first, which is like Woodson and Allen County, and then Labette, Crawford and Cherokee County. Those are the members of the Community Corrections Advisory Committee. They came up with a formula for this block grant dollars that includes the population, the success rate, which Laurie's talked about, um, square miles of your jurisdiction. I'm drawing a blank. Oh, the number of filings and your KBI crime rate. So they, they, so this is a pretty complex formula. And maybe if we had Scott, we could have done better, but, um, KDOC at the time did not have the bandwidth to come up with a formula for this. So they used a staff member from Johnson County to come up with this formula. So they, they mined our data, they mined KDOC's data and we also send them data. Whenever requested monthly or quarterly, so he can work on this formula. KDOC then, um, applied this formula to the same amount of money that we've been receiving for the last two or three years and doled it out differently. Um, which results in, in Cedric County receiving a thirty-seven percent cut. Now, the behavioral health funds, which are not required to be applied for, but we always have because we know substance abuse and mental health issues are gigantic barriers to success and also drivers of crime in our community. So we've always applied for that. Um, we receive about six hundred thousand dollars today. That is cut by fifty percent under this, under this new proposal. So that's part of our, while it's a, it's a smaller amount, it's still part of that. So we would be cut by about fifty percent, over fifty percent of those fundings, the funding. Not every judicial district gets that. Not every judicial district wants that. You get to say what you apply for. Um, we've had judicial districts say, I'm not going to use it. I don't have, I don't have the ability. We don't have the providers. We don't, whatever. They don't apply for it. So we asked at the last meeting, what about these folks that don't even want it? Well, then they can send it back. So we'll, we'll not have an opportunity to apply for what we need or be, so if Harvey County doesn't need the money, it just goes back. And then similar to our accounting rules, it goes back to the general fund. So counties that never used and never asked for behavioral health funding are asked, are given the funding and they may not use it. And, um, I provided you with a chart of the number of cuts. Interestingly, interestingly enough, everybody on the CCAC who helped write the formula are also benefiting from the formula. So, and I've been more than transparent with my peers and with KDOC that that just doesn't smell.
It doesn't smell right. Can you pause for a second? We, we have the biggest need in the county and the, in the state, correct? Twenty percent of the population, about thirty percent of the violent offenders. If you look at the point in time, the count, we, we are serving the most individuals at the entire state. There's a new formula coming. Was Cedric County invited to be, and we have the biggest need here. We're doing the most programming here. Was Cedric County even invited to be on this formula committee?
No.
Uh, but yet everyone that is on this committee, they're benefiting, but the biggest county with the biggest need is taking a forty percent cut.
Yes.
Okay, that doesn't just smell bad. This, this is absolutely awful. It's inexcusable. It's absolutely inexcusable.
And I've been very transparent with KDOC, with the Deputy Secretary and with my peers that this does not smell right. And in open meetings, I've been very transparent that this, it doesn't look, it looks terrible. So I've asked for three things. One is to, um, I, if I were coming up with this formula and I can't do math, I said before I'd get paid more money if I could. We have universities that could appropriately study this and come up with a formula that may or may not be different, but it would be a neutral third party that has no stake in the game. Um, we, I've also looked at funding formulas around the country. Texas has a like a windfall rule. No, no jurisdiction can get more than five percent or lose more than ten. Because how do you work in this environment when you're looming thirty-seven percent?
Can I ask a couple of questions then?
Yes.
We're, this is a two point one million dollar cut.
Yes.
Johnson County, mind you, and I, I like my friends from Johnson County, they're getting a million dollars more in this. They wrote the formula, getting a million dollars more. Cedric County wasn't in the room with the biggest need in the state. We're losing two point one million dollars.
Yes.
And we're serving just in your point in time count, we're seeing, serving roughly two hundred more people than they are. What, what's the impact here? Two point one million dollars being lost. What's the impact to the community?
The impact of the community is going to be a reduction in programming. We've talked to you folks, we're pretty proud of our Badgers Intervention Program for, uh, domestic violence. So if someone's with us and they have a history of domestic violence, we have a program approved by the Attorney General's Office, um, who audit, audits us annually to say that yes, this program works. That would go away because that's behavioral health funding. That's how we form it. That would go away. Some of our funding to help folks pay for medication, housing would go away and then staff. That's, um, this first round, we're, 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 we're shining it up right now, but we think about and Department of Corrections knows this, it's not a secret. All my staff have heard this since December. Um, probably seven or eight staff right now for this first cut that are going to be cut. Um, so what that's going to look like is higher caseloads and everything that Laurie talked about that takes longer to do that KDOC has us do is going to go away. It's going, it's, we don't want it to, but there is a reality when you have less people, you can, you have to do less work. I can't kill people.
Right. So I just want to be perfectly clear. We're talking about that, that they reduce the overall pot of money?
Oh.
Or are we, this is the same pot of money, just on some planet, they've decided that the, the county with the biggest need, serving the most people with the most violent crime proportionally in the state, somehow doesn't just get a cut, but they get a forty percent cut.
Yes.
This is, this makes zero sense on any planet.
It's the same, it's the same pot of money. No new money, no, no reduction. This is a forced reduction.
Who's making this decision? This is the committee and who's the ultimate decision maker that signs off on this formula?
Secretary of Corrections.
So the Secretary of Corrections, which works on behalf of the governor's office, correct?
Yes.
So the legislature, does the legislature have any power in this whatsoever?
I believe they do, but I don't know what it is.
Can anybody hold up her strings? Who we can call to try to get some help?
Sheriff, sure. I don't know if I said, sorry, Chairman, uh, Justin Waggoner, County Counselor and Sheriff is not who we would call. In this case, this is set by, by legislature, so they, they could change this to where someone other than the KDOC secretary would decide, for example, uh, the legislature could set the rates instead, instead of delegating that authority to the state agency. Um, but the legislature could change that because there's a statute that outlines how all this is done. Um, and, and Steve's outlined it correctly. I mean, it's the KDOC secretary in consultation with this committee. Um, but that could be changed if the legislature would see fit to do so. Um, I would imagine something like this would probably need enough, uh, support legislative to override, uh, the governor's veto because I, I would presume she may be interested.
She would veto this. That's, that'd be incredible to me. So you have KDOC secretary who's approving this formula and telling us, sorry, this is the way it's going to be. Does the governor's office weigh in on any of this? Do we know is the governor's office going to make an adjustment here? Or is our only hope going to our legislators and, and trying to see the injustice of this and the impact to this community? If that's our only option, then we get on, then I think we need to formulate a letter immediately to the governor's office, to the Senate President, to the Speaker of the House, the Senate Majority Leader and the entire South Central delegation. And I think the community needs to be aware of the impact of what this cut will do because there's no sense in this whatsoever. This lacks all sense. The biggest need in the biggest county in regards to the, to the number of offenders and we're getting a forty percent cut. I might be able to stomach a five percent cut, a seven percent cut. I think that could be rational. A forty percent cut decimates programming here and it's absolutely irrational.
We've been told that this is the formula. I mean, that, that there was not going to be any changes.
Our hope is the legislature.
So there are, there the way I read it, there's three KSI, KSAs that spell out the funding formula. One is essentially says that whatever the county, a county or group of counties receives from grant funds from KDOC, they should also invest a like amount from other funds. So, um, that's not enforced. That's not a part of this policy. That's not a part of this funding formula and that's on the books today. So there's three formulas. I have said in public meetings that they are cherry picking which KSAs they're using. There's one in, so for example, yes, say that we get a cut, but we contribute, Lindsay just showed me the number, I said six is eight. You contribute eight million dollars to community, community corrections. That's more than we receive, so we should get a, yes, you're meeting this and you don't get a cut. That's I guarantee you the majority of the thirty-one judicial districts are not funding these services in Cedric County.
But we are.
But you are. More than, more than the statutory amount.
More the one to one, more than.
So if we're going to, my position has been if you're going to follow one law, you follow all three and figure it out. And if you can't do it, then you get a university to do it. Publicly funded, they don't have a stake in this game. They have mathematicians, they have criminal justice experts, they have statisticians, they have economists, they have, you should be talking to the communities of what you're going to do because this is, you can see all the cuts. Slaying County gets a gigantic cut. They're smaller than we are, so their twenty-one percent cut is bigger than ours. It's huge.
Yeah. Commissioner Maister, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, my, one of my first thoughts and as we turmoil through this is that we go to legislative action, but you're saying that there is, there's state statutes right now that
Yes.
KDOC's not, not enforcing.
Yes.
So I, I totally agree with a letter, uh, sooner than later and maybe, I don't know if Commissioner Howell's got background on this, but would it be invaluable to, to on our legislative agenda to maybe request that these three get combined into one statute that actually has teeth in it and is enforceable?
Sure. I mean, I'm open for anything.
Why would, why would, why do we have three?
It's over the years.
Okay.
There've been different initiatives that come up.
Okay.
Uh, risk reduction, this behavioral health stuff. So some of it came by the way of statute. So these three, I don't have the dates on them. I don't, but.
And so my other, I'm trying to do quick math. How, how much is the, is the pot?
Thirty million.
Thirty million? And we were, we were getting about five.
We're getting about five.
Out of the thirty-one jurisdictions.
Yes.
And now there's the, of cut.
And I don't know how to rectify this. Um, I know I've spoken.
I get it.
Commissioner Bluebaugh has talked about the, the per client allocation. When you were in the school board, you talked about per student allocation. But you can see that, I mean, some, some jurisdictions are getting eleven thousand dollars per. I mean, they're gee, I hate talking about my peers, but there are so many inefficiencies in the system that some judicial districts have two offices with two directors, two directors. For whatever reason, there's historical weirdness in Kansas. So if you think about Cali County has two courthouses, right? The Arc City and Winfield. Why? I don't know. But they also have, um, some jurisdictions are split in the community corrections offices. So Axon County and Leavenworth County are getting two allocations for one judicial district. And there's more than that.
Well, I talked about inefficiencies. I mean, we're recent, about twenty-five percent of our caseload is from people from outside of Cedric County. Do you think that nears other counties too? Or are we disproportionately serving a higher number of out-of-county residents?
The last time we looked, I think, Lord, did we have sixty-seven or a hundred? We had a hundred people out. So the, we're, more people come here. I do know from the border counties, especially Johnson, Hawaiian County, they have more what's called interstate compact cases. So somebody in Missouri gets a crime, they can be supervised where they live. So they have a high number of that. We have that too. Their percentage is just higher than.
Ge- geography.
Yes.
Commissioner Ha.
So one of my curiosities, curiosities was whether these two columns add up to the same number. And I was just told by Lindsay, it looks like they do. So what this actually is, is, is not a, um, the allocation is not, um, changed from the previous year. It's just that they're. the allocation is not changed from the previous year. It's just that they're, they're picking winners and losers, if you will, based on these other demographics. And so, you know, one thing I would ask, have to ask is, do these counties that stand to benefit, have they raised a, a need for, for example, I assume that, uh, a lot of these counties are receiving more money. Have they, have they made a long-term case for more money? I mean, they, have they been advocating, we're just, we don't, we're not aware of it. Have they been advocating for years?
Some.
Well, if these add up to the same number, and again, I'm still, I'm still doing the math here. It looks to me like for about $3 million, they could bring those counties up. This is a, you know, say $25 billion organization altogether. And I'm thinking about $3 million. So one way to approach this might be a hold harmless clause. Rather than making a zero sum game, if these are people arguing for more money, they need more money. I don't want to be against them necessarily. I just want to be damaged in the process.
Thank you.
So there ought to be a hold harmless clause. This is who can't, we can't go down. Second of all, I'd say this, I don't know if we've reached, and I know this is just an advisory committee. I don't know. I, I think the advisory committee did something, my opinion, uh, almost immoral here, but we don't know if the secretary is going to agree with them. Do we know that they, that, do we have secretary's agreement right now?
Yes.
This is moving forward.
Yes, this is the formula.
So we could appeal to the governor. The governor, I would assume that has an opinion in this, that she could, she could, through an executive order could reject this change. Does she not have that authority?
Commissioner How, I don't know that the governor could, since the stat, since the legislature's vested this authority in the KDOC secretary. I, I think the governor could through their, through her influences, being the governor and appointing the secretary and try to convince them, not to approve this formula, but I'm not so sure that the governor could through executive.
Yeah, I would just like to think, I, I think the advisory board, I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt and say, they're trying to help those that need more money at the debt, you know, to our detriment. There's more of those counties that benefit than those counties that, that are hurt. And so this being, this essentially being, uh, district driven, if you will. These are areas of the state that think they need more money and it's easier to pick on someone else that's not in the room. I think that's maybe what they've done here. That to me is immoral, but to the extent, to the extent they need more money, I think this is relevant to their budget. This is actually kind of a small problem, really. If that's what's going on here, I would like to see the state step up and meet that need through an appropriation. And I think the governor ought to take that position. I think the secretary should take that position. If the legislature was, was able to do it. But these programs are invaluable. And I think that the idea that we would simply just throw this on either, either by dis servicing the people of Central County or property tax increase. That's what they're saying. It's one of those two, I think is not known by the legislature. This has happened. This has happened really, man, this is such a technical thing that happened in such a way that I don't think the, the South Central delegation even knows this is even going on. And once they find out, this is going to be addressed. This ought to be, again, just almost like the tag office issue, almost ought to be top of our legislative platform, because it's such a, an egregious act that we, anybody in the legislature would say, this is not fair. This is not right. If they want to, um, you know, impact, uh, let me, let me say that, I guess a couple more comments here. Anytime you redo a formula and you try to do, do a zero sum game solution, again, I'll look at our sales tax discussion. I can see why, you know, Derby's screaming because we're trying to approach this from a zero sum game perspective. We would benefit and they're going to be to their detriment. I see why they're upset. All right? That's why they have the whole harmless solution that says, we don't want to hurt you. Let's just do this over a period of time so that you never go down. You're, you're, you're going to see a, a static number for a few years, but eventually go back up some more. But for a little while, we're going to see your, your increases will slow down or if not stop for a couple of years until we get this formula corrected. Okay. I, I see that's a reasonable way for us to advocate. We should do that. And I think this is much like that. The aging formula we talked about, when we're talking about senior centers or whatever, I think this is much like that as well. So if you're going to change the formula and you're going to find a bunch of losers out there, I don't think that's the way we should do it. I think this is a great example of why a formula, if you're going to change the formula, it should be done very thoughtfully. And, and when you create losers in the, in the process, additional is almost immoral for that to be the way we would advocate and go, go forward. So I think this advisory committee did not realize they have other options. They should have advocated for appropriation to fix this rather than a, a shifting of dollars from one to the other. But anyway, I do think the letter that Chairman just spoke of is imperative. I would send that letter to the Secretary of Corrections as well. Make sure he's aware of what we are doing. And then I would attack this with legislation immediately. And I think this ought to be fairly easy to address through the legislature.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Steve, can you, at, at the first part of your presentation, you talked about that you described the community corrections advisory board members. Can, can you slowly tell us again, so I can mark on my, on the chart here, which ones are members of that committee?
Yes. Labette Crawford. Johnson. Alan Neosho. Northwest Kansas. Right above that is Dickinson and Geary. Dickinson, Reno.
Oh, that's it. Does that cover the southeast corner?
The southeast, there's no southwest.
So Labette Crawford, southeast. Okay.
The two are at large and the rest represent geographical locations in there.
Okay. So in your turmoil of planning to take on this cut, uh, Lori's presentation, we had ADP of 1,100 ish.
Okay.
And 300 are out of county. Are you, have you thought, or do you have the authority to just say, we're not taking those 300?
We don't. Um, we sign an agreement with them when we accept their money that will do their work and that's one of them. Something else to consider is that they're, they're giving, we have four levels of supervision, high, moderate, very high, moderate, low, and some whatever. There's four levels. And you get a certain amount of money per level, um, but there's not a standard that funds that. So if, if we would switch and have all high risk people, this formula is not flexible enough for us to be able to hire anybody and do anything about.
You get the money from the 300 out of county. Who, who's that money come from? That, that county or the, or the state?
Comes from the, it would come from the state. But in, well, it depends on when the point of time ends. Where, where, where does their file sit at the point of time? Is it with us or is it already accepted to us?
But no matter how you cut it, it comes from this, a bulk comes from the state, but a percentage of it comes from local taxpayers.
Oh, yes.
One to one or more than.
More than one, 1.5 maybe, 1.25.
So Steve, to explain our current funding, our five million or so, it, it, over time, the state recommends programs to you. We are, we historically have always tried to do the state programs. Other counties don't do that though, correct?
Right. Some, some counties do not. Some counties do. Some people may maintain it. We do not.
So is it fair to say that over time, we have tried to be a good partner with the state? We have funded these programs. Other counties have not. And now their proposal, or this is just another way to look at a bad formula, is they're going to take that money that we have given locally and that we have taken from the state to provide a program they want, and they're going to give it to other counties, maybe who have not.
Yes.
It's exactly what's happening.
Yes. Even if they don't want it, some, some are very candid and say, we're not doing that in our community. That's not something we're doing. Mario asked the question, well, what happens to that money? It goes back. I mean, that's.
The general.
Yes.
And that, and this, this is going to impact our juvenile side of the house too.
Yes. The Mario is on the juvenile committee and so he knows it's coming and we know what's happening. It's been talked about for a long time as well. There's different caveats with that, um, but we have by far the largest number of kids in the community under supervision.
Okay. And then Lindsay, you passed out this, this long sheet. So.
If you go to the second page.
Right.
There's juvenile and community corrections programs. Again, these are mandatory programs that we provide on behalf of the state. This is what you've seen each February at the retreat, but it seems particularly salient right now. And you can see that there's a 20% decrease kind of since the great recession in state funding for juvenile and community corrections, while you all have maintained pretty much a stable level of funding.
Okay.
Well, they've already, they've already reduced the allocation to support the programs overall, and now they're looking to do it somewhere.
Good. One other point that I'm going to throw in, just to muddy into Lindsay's point, is we use about $500,000 of, of AISP money in the adult residential, because the state doesn't give us enough to fund that. So we use all the, and we also use county money to make adult residential go. Probably in year two, the, the community corrections money for adult res goes away and goes back to ISP. So that's going to affect the population of people who are in the jail, because the people at res would be in the jail were not for res. Yep. So we, we think, we think we don't have to do that in this first year, but in the second year and then the third year is, is supervisory levels and, and support staff and things like that. So it's.
Steve, uh, they have a longer document, white paper that covers a lot of this material in more depth. And they're supposed to have that finished incorporating what the cuts look like. The state had also provided a long sheet with more detail about how the weighting of each of the criteria that they settled on to create the formula of what that looks like dollar wise in each jurisdiction. That's available as well. Interesting to look at. Some of your, some of your larger jurisdictions, because they're getting points for geographic size, are consuming dollars that seemingly are for pay for fuel and travel, not direct care. I mean, it contributes to that, but you know, and then to look at the numbers, some jurisdictions is getting $10,000 per client. What is that money going to? Is that going to staff? Is that going to? What's that money being spent on per client?
Yeah.
They had 31 clients.
Wow.
Average GDP.
This is, um, I, I, I'll just say, and I'm speaking on behalf of the commission, but I, I think that I know the pulse of my colleagues too, that of all the things that we're working on and all the opportunities and all the challenges, in my view, for this community, this is the number one challenge that we're facing. These programs reduce incarceration. These programs support rehab rehabilitation. These programs improve public safety. And this is what we hear in the community today, is this is what they want. It is beyond me how anyone can look at this and see that the biggest, the county with the biggest need, doing the most services deserves a 40% cut. But whatever the formula would tell them, that, that this is just beyond me. So I think we're going to make an appeal with an official letter and statement, not only to the governor's office and the KDOC secretary, but also to leadership in the legislature, because we're going to need their help apparently. I think the community needs to be aware that you're going to have a commission. That you're going to fight for this. You're going to have Central County Corrections. You're going to fight for what's right in this. It's by any standard, this is not right. This is simply not right. And I'm not going to impute the, the character of any of the individual counties or individuals that are on this committee. But I'll just say publicly, this, this doesn't smell right. This doesn't look good to know that counties that have marginal challenges that we do in, in offenders and crime, are, are seeing increases, but yet we're seeing not just a haircut. We're seeing a decimation of the programs that we're offering here in Central County. And this is just by any standard, not appropriate. And it's illogical. So we're, we're going to, we're going to publicly fight this and publicly fight whoever tries to get in the way for doing what's best in this community. So this is helpful, but, but we've got our work cut out for us and we're going to elevate this now and make it, make the awareness level grow exponentially starting today. Last thoughts?
Chairman, I'm sorry.
I just make sure the, I don't know how we, what's going to be in the content of the letter.
We'll figure it out.
Maybe your speech just there, just give that one in, in writing. But I, I assume we'll need some help strategically on, on the.
We'll craft the letters. Is the, is the goal to bring it back to the commission in an open body and vote and all of you sign it?
I, I think the more times we talk about this publicly, the better it's going to be. I think our citizens need to understand what's happening here and who's, who's, who's responsible for these decisions.
We ask.
We drafted the letter at a commission meeting for us to approve and discuss.
But we have a meeting on.
I actually think maybe a press conference, press conference would actually drive a news story for sure. This is that big of a deal.
It is.
I would suggest you do a press conference and the letter out to our media friends and force a, a news story to happen.
Be nice to have.
A lot of times our medias don't necessarily generate news stories.
What's the timeline on the white paper, Steve, on?
We'll have it done today. We just wanted, we wanted to be
Okay.
more specific with the cuts where is that, it's not final, but we want to be accurate. Like I said, correction staff know this is, this has not been a secret. I've, I've communicated openly with them because it's scary. We've, we've already seen, so our normal, I just want to add one more thing. Our normal progression is you become an ISO, or excuse me, a corrections worker at JDF, JRF. Then you become supervisor. Then you go work in the community as an ISO. That pipeline is pretty well stopped because nobody wants to do it because, um, we're talking about cuts. If this doesn't change, then we're going to be working with HR to do RIFs, reduction in force. I mean, our, our system is not working because it can't.
Right. Let's get a draft of the letter. We'll get that started today. You're all together again on Friday for agenda review. We do the press announcement either before or after agenda review, maybe right after agenda review. We'll work out logistics on that. Would that sound okay?
So white paper, we'll formulate a letter. I, I do suggest that we do a press conference. I'm texting with several legislative individuals from South Central delegation. If you in leadership, they're not aware of any of this and they are taken aback right now. So, so we've got to push and we got to push pretty hard.
We shoot for Friday at 11 or so.
Okay.
Public safety is one of our number one issues. And I think if people can't feel safe in our community in Central County, has some opportunities here. This is a big deal to the whole state of Kansas. You can't, economic development just falls flat if you have a unsafe community.
Inconsequential.
I, I think we need to talk a little bit about this other program income. There's a line here on there, on your long sheet. Lindsay, what is that specifically?
It would be any mixture of revenues that the department receives, if they have charges for service, if there's other reimbursements that they receive. It would be anything else, because we wanted to just give you the bottom line, um, what the county support is, what that gap is between real revenues coming in and expenditures.
It's just such a dynamic line, but I would point out that it has a 77% cut over the 16 year period. So I like to point that out, that there's another factor there. I think our, one that we don't have here on the sheet is I don't think that we could maybe get it, but be nice to see that the, uh, the client, the client percentages changes over year. Otherwise, how many people are being served in 16 versus 2025? Might be interesting to see the change of that, because I think my suspicion is we have more folks we're providing services to than we did 10, 16 years ago. And then another point I would make here is the county support for these programs has gone up 67%. So just like a lot of other, which was kind of the whole point of the whole sheet here is that state support for their programs has gone down and county support for those very same programs mandated by the state of Kansas has, has gone up. So this is again, another story. You look at that together. And you'll, their, their numbers went down 20% on the sheet, another 37%, 40% being proposed. Our numbers have already gone up 67% and our clientele's numbers have gone up. And again, people feel unsafe in this community. What's the answer? Do you fund these programs? It's, it's complete nonsense.
And it's, it, it is state law that the counties are supposed to match. It's, it's, it's existing state law. I don't know. That's, I don't, I've never referenced that before, but it is, it's, it's a real life.
Justin, and, and, and some of these briefings, if you can give us some statute and give us some context in that, that, that'd be helpful.
Sure. Be happy to do that.
I, and I don't mind us being invested in this. I think we should be. I, I just think that, that what's noticeable here is the shift from state responsibility to right to local government. And they have, it's like they've just backed off and their hands are off of it completely, almost. Nearly off of, off of it completely. And at the end of the day, we have a, a growing problem and the state has responsibility and they're just.
These folks would be in prison. These are, the majority of these folks are presumptive prison folks. And the court knows that we don't play to the test. So if somebody needs to be revoked, we never say, no, don't do that. Our numbers are not good, obviously, because our numbers are not good. But if they need to go to prison, they go to prison and that's what we recommend. We don't, we don't ever judge it. Well, our funding formula is, if they got to go, they got to go. That's just the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I would suggest maybe as a handout Friday would be to, to highlight the data on that line in a way to present it to, you know, because I think all that data is really important. It's not just, I mean, the message really is you, people may wonder whether property taxes are high. Well, there's another good example. So I just think we need to be, explain this, not just on the sheet, because I think the sheet adds more information about other things which are important, but highlight this one thing, you know, over 16 years, there's what's happened on these four demographics.
Tie it all together. That's good.
I've sent two letters to the secretary pointing that out and finance gave me the numbers for what we're investing in. So he knows he has that and he has that data and just.
Incorporate that into white paper and then.
Okay. We'll get to work. See.
Thank you.
Okay, bud.
Tanya, quickly, uh, let's talk about legislative platform. This is on the platform, of course, already, so we can skip that, but, uh, let's go through the rest.
Uh, Chair, Chairman, I will try to, um, go through this quickly.
Uh, one issue, Chairman, I will try to go through this quickly. You know, we talked about this, I met with you last week, so you are familiar with these items. So we are meeting a little bit early at the suggestion of our lobbyist, Jason Watkins. He was suggesting that we try to have our legislative platform earlier this year, by October to get this to our South Central delegation and the Kansas Legislature. So just a couple of things before I get started, I kind of have him on my shoulder. Just thinking through this, I would like you to, to maybe think of as we go through this, if you have anything that you want to consider as a priority, because I know that he will tell us. Are there two or three items that we need to consider as a priority, maybe three or four items that we need to consider as a priority? That he needs to really work on as he's there for the 2026 season or session, excuse me. So the first thing I just threw on there, I, I kind of stole it from our KC platform. You indicated for the KC platform, you wanted our treasure item to be a priority. So I just threw that on there, not necessarily saying this is a priority for us, but I did throw it on there. So our first item then is to support legislation appropriating additional budget for the county treasurer's tag office. And then it just follows that these functions are state mandates that require local property tax funding. And then I'll fill in some information. If you believe this is a priority.
I think it's a priority item, but I'd like to just maybe deviate from KAC a little bit. I don't think it's just a funding issue. I think it, I, I, I think we ought to be talking in, Randy, Randy's in the room here, but we ought to be talking about the idea that you have to do your tag work in the county that you're assigned to, which you live in is based, is based when we had embossed plates. I think with the printed plates, I believe this is, this is a lot more like the driver's license office. I think we should be able to go to any county that provides tag services. Geographic, geographic limits should be removed entirely. So if you want to go to Augusta or somewhere to get your tag done, I think you ought to be able to do that. Or Andover or Wellington or Celine, Celine County or Hutchison or wherever. If they have a way to get in and get out, there's a tag office to provide services for this, this government service, you should be able to go anywhere you want to go in the state of Kansas. I don't know if that's how easy that is, but it just seems like this, the idea of having to go to your tag, your, your county tag, tag office is based on the old idea. They used to stock those plates in the back room. So now that that's not what we're doing, we're printing the plates and mailing them out. I don't think, I don't think that should be a limitation any longer. And then I would also add to that, I really like what Oklahoma does and, and for other states. They've essentially privatized and a lot of this, I think the government still has a footprint. They can do it from the government, but they do allow private sector administrative services that handles most of the tag work that was, that could be done in the private sector. Someone is trained, trained on how to do this. They ought to be able to, to, to handle the funds and, and issue the paperwork on behalf of the state of Kansas. So privatizing this ought to be, I think, the, the best option. Again, five states do this currently, including our friends to the south. And I, I believe this is a, this is modernizing the whole system. That needs to be, needs to be, I would like to see us have a bill that does that. I think that would be the best discussion, even if we don't get it passed. Getting that conversation started, I think is my preference.
Okay. So I'll add those two items. And then what I'll do is I'm going to, I'm going to take more input. I'll add that in here. Then we'll just, as you know, we kind of keep regrouping and until we get it to where we want it, bring Jason in as well. Okay. Under appropriations, so under aging, this is to support their association. We don't have the numbers yet, but two items. Add the dollars to Senior Care Act base funding and then add the dollars million, which would be a million, whatever that number is, to nutrition services for older adults based funding. Okay. Appraiser's office. So this is the appropriations asked, and then we have several items under policy. But the appropriations asked is to support legislation appropriating additional budget for the county appraiser. And then the additional verbiage, which is these functions are state mandates with local property tax funding. There. Okay. Calm care. The, then this is the association asked, there's three items addressing the needs of the uninsured and underinsured, keeping the promise of mental health reform. Continue to enhance funding to support behavioral health services for the uninsured. And the request is for an additional four million toward the fiscal year 2027 for CMHC contract funding. Second item then is to allocate additional funds to address behavioral health workforce shortages. And then the third bullet is to continue and maintain system improvements through the certified community behavioral health clinic, CCBHC model. In order to preserve the effectiveness of the model and in recognition of the investment made by the state, CCBHC certification process should continue to be limited to CMHCs as originally intended. Okay. And keep moving on unless I hear for now. Okay. CDVO, this is not updated for 2026. They do not have their interhab request information. So I'm just going to skip over that one. Okay. For corrections, the appropriation asked, funding formula, we just went over that in pretty great detail. And then the second item is to support use of evidence-based funding for community programming need protections from legislation sweeping the general fund. Okay. Under health, Adrian asked to change the verbiage there. So what she's asked for it to read is sustainable public health funding with inflation increases for salary, operating cost and supplies. Okay. Public services, support addressing gap for youth and foster care with behavioral health issues. And second bullet then is to create a pool of matching funds for capital expenditures related to development and implementation of juvenile crisis intervention centers. Okay. Now we're moving into policy under appraiser office. These are the items that we also discussed for KAC platform. First one, renaming county appraisers offices to state appraiser on behalf of each county. Second one is enact a law that requires determination from the board of tax appeals to be reached within one year of the appeal being filed with the board, otherwise, unless otherwise agreed, agreed to by the parties. Third one is tax bills sent out twice a year. May tax bills includes only state, so state of Kansas, USD, et cetera, tax billing. December bill includes only local tax, so county, city cemetery, et cetera, billing. Fourth bullet, require each county appraiser to post and maintain data regarding property tax appeals and valuations within the county on a website that is available to the general public. Next item is broaden, broaden the eligible pool of candidates for the county appraisers position by amending KSA 19430 to no longer limit county appraisers to individuals for three years or more of mass appraisal experience. And then last item is enact legislation where each county would have the option of establishing intermediary hearing panel funded by the state that could hear and potentially resolve tax appeals before the matter may be heard by the board of tax appeals, small claims division.
But thank you. On that, I know we've had some great discussions about the appraisal world and a lot of ideas. And, and I think this is a nice job of prioritizing one through six. And some of them seem to be kind of, kind of no brainers, pretty easy to do. Some might be a little more difficult, but, but I'm glad that these are in writing for us there.
Okay. Corrections, then again, this is policy. So three items here. Amend necessary KSA's to add juvenile detention facilities to reimbursement provisions previously ratified for adult jails in the 2023, 2024 session, which was Senate Bill 228. 2023, 2024 session, Senate Bill 228 directs KDAS to reimburse counties for costs related to holding an adult person in custody while awaiting examination, evaluation or treatment to restore competency against stand trial. Second bullet is make enhancements to Senate Bill 367, 2016 via passage of House Bill 2329, out of home placements. Illegal firearm possessions by juveniles. And then the third bullet, Steve, I hope it's still there. Yes. Support public defender model for juvenile offenders. Current model is appointment model. There's been work to improve defense in the juvenile court. It may shift funding responsibility from the county to the state. The Board of Indigent Defense is a state funded entity. Any questions on that? Or do we need Steve to?
Is this one similar to what Mark Bennett, when we raised the money to pay for public defenders? This, so right now, if there's a public defender, we have to pay, pay for that?
Yes, the county pays for, for appointed offenders in juvenile system. They, there's been a committee for the last five or six years working on the equivalent of, of state board of indigent, indigent defense to represent juveniles, which be funded by the state instead of.
Thanks for clarifying.
These next two election office items are carryover from last legislative platform. Modify statute for any election precinct separated from other precincts by any public right of way. County or township roads or some similar geographical divisions may be combined with an adjacent precinct as long as the political districts are the same for each of the combined districts. Second item then is modify statute for precinct person, election results data shall not be considered final or official until county canvassing is complete. The election commissioner or county clerk of an, of a county shall be afforded up to three business days to transmit the official results for precinct elections to the office of the Kansas Secretary of State.
For that first bullet, can we add just to, it's a little bit, people don't know why this is coming up. Basically, it's the intent to eliminate redacted election results data. What happens currently, if you look at the results data, you cannot see, it doesn't add up because there's literally you know, 40 or so, maybe 50 precincts that are so small that the data is actually redacted. So you're trying to understand how the votes happen. You can't analyze that.
So you want me to add some language in there?
Just a, just a couple of words.
Clarifies that?
A couple of words, something to the effect of eliminate redacted election results date. In order to eliminate redacted election results data, comma. That might be just, to me, that brings purpose to the reason why we're saving that.
Okay. Next item is amend KSA 19214 and increase the contract expenditure amounts that triggers the mandatory public letting requirement for county construction contracts from in excess of 25,000 up to 100,000. So we're just asking there for an incremental expenditure amount that matches state purchasing. Okay. Next item then is finance and economic development. These are spreader. These are all carryovers from last year. Support amendments to statute that allow counties to go out for sales tax in quarter cent intervals to allow that to instead be done in eight cent intervals. Uh, this one we're all familiar with. Continue support for HB 2377, a change to the current distribution formula for the county's 1% sales tax. The distribution is based in part upon the counties and cities' mill levies. In essence, if the municipality lowers its mill levity and other municipalities all keep their mill levies the same. The municipality that lowers its mill levy also receives a smaller portion in sales tax. Up the full statute is KSA 12192, a change could be to include the assessed valuation as the calculation instead of total tangible property levies, which is partially the tenant's mill levy.
But could you consider adding in that first second long sentence, municipality that lowered its mill levy receives a smaller portion. Could you something, something like while the others that do not lower their uh, mill levy?
We, we could reward it to basically say that it unfairly rewards people who pay the higher tax.
Analyzed on one side to the benefit of others that don't.
Well, and there's, I think there's still, yeah, more conversation to be had over the next few days too, with some different folks about how to approach this. So I would ask that you consider keeping it on here, just as is for now, and then maybe leave some room, some wiggle room open to let us come in and refine that after some conversations with Dr. Gu at WSU hopefully tomorrow. And then a couple of city administrators have reached out and kind of want to circle back with them too and hear what they had to say.
I, I can hear the, the critique that the, a lot of people in the legislature believe that the county commissioners are in control of assessed value. But we tell our appraisers to raise the assessed value because we want more money in our, but that's what they, that's our premise.
They're wrong.
And so they do this formula, which I completely agree with. I think it's important to hand over the responsibility of, you know, appraiser control over to the state of Kansas, because now they got rid of their 1.5 mils for the state coffers, if you will. They are truly an unbiased and you will uniform appraisal process can happen at the state level, whereas a county, a county based appraiser office potentially has, even though I don't think it happens, has the argument that we have influenced their, their work to increase our dollars. And so I would like to, I don't know when, when, when or where to add this, but I really want the appraisers office and not just renaming them, but actually to make it clear this is a state office. If they want local support for their state office and have us be involved in hiring people to fill their the seats in that office, I think that's something we can certainly talk about, but I, I want this to be clear. This is a state office. So functionally, we have no, no ability to influence their, their non-biased appraisals. I already know the argument on this sales tax piece is going to be, well, but you guys are going to influence the appraiser to increase assessed value. So just be ready for that argument. I think we need to be able to answer that. And I think the answer is a, is an appraiser issue.
Okay. And then the last item under finances and then Senate Bill 13 from 2019 to allow for adjustments to the revenue neutral rate.
And this, this again, if I can jump in, this is a carry forward from prior years. I don't know if this is maybe the highest priority for the commission this year, given the other constitutional amendment conversations that are happening, but it is something that in a perfect world, we would really like to get amended so that we don't get penalized for that WSU mill levy at the very least. And then maybe some other common sense adjustments like CPI and things, but I asked Tanya to include it, but I also recognize that the commission doesn't want to fight that fight.
I, I think this does belong on the platform and I, I think that my, my solution would be to redefine R and R to be CPI plus new constructions. That's simple. I mean, that holds you level to your locally economy. If you want to exceed that, then then I think things could happen, but I believe our, our goal want to be CPI plus new construction.
Could we also add any taxes done on behalf of another entity like WSU?
Be fine. I, and I personally like Adam Smith's solution of a petition solution to, if you want to exceed it, we have to explain to the people and they have the option of a local petition to limit us if that's what they want. So nothing out there actually limits our, our spending. This would actually not just give us a, a hurdle to jump over, but actually limits our spending based on a petition. I'm okay with that. People want to say we shouldn't hire 20 new, 20 new dispatchers. They have the option to rein us back in if that's what they want to do. So I'm okay with the petition solution. I think R and R should be redefined. And I think the, your, your recommendation of eight mandated mill levy funding ought to be exempt from that calculation. I think that's, that's what we should be doing here.
Okay. Health, I grabbed this because this hit our KAC platform. So I just put this on ours. Enact language that allows counties to take action to protect the public from dangerous animals while also ensuring that owners of such animals are afforded constitutional deaccess. All right. MAPD, amend KSA. This is also a carryover from last year, 66, 2019, to allow local governments to consider cell tower zoning in additional use cases.
Chairman, if I could just real quick on that, I, I think I suggest it's a slight tweak to the language to say to consider them like other cases. We, the, just to elaborate a little bit, we do consider those cases, but there's a statute that sets out like 18 things we can't do on cell tower cases. And so it's pretty restrictive on what you all can do. So the, the request would be to modify that some way, but I think just adding being able to treat them like other zoning and conditional use cases.
Okay. Public works. This is also a carryover from last year. Modify statute that would shield municipalities from liability if they would go above and beyond MUTCD. And it spells it out there, requirements and wouldn't then be responsible if they would remove that additional condition. All right. Regional forensic science center. These two are ones that we worked really hard on last year. And, and I think this is also why Jason wants to make sure that our platform is done early. These are the two remain bills. I don't know. I don't think I need to use out. So you guys are very familiar with those. We have a new one from regional forensic science center, amend KSA 651108 to exempt Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center to obtain approval from Secretary of Health and Environment for testing of controlled substances. Okay. Sheriff, free and state Medicaid coverage for Sedgwick County detention inmates. Just for your.
Oh, I think you're going to say the same thing I'm saying is that we, I talked to the sheriff about this again. I, I think fundamentally this is, I think this is wrong. For someone that is charged with a crime, not convicted of a crime to lose Medicaid coverage, the second they walk in, there, there's no due process there. They are.
For someone that is charged with a crime, not convicted of a crime, to lose Medicaid coverage, the second they walk in, they there's no due process there. They are simply charged with a crime, not convicted. Sheriff and I spoke again on this and he just doesn't see any momentum at the state level and he he thinks it would just be a waste of the space on the paper, unfortunately. Does not. So I I if the commission wants to go ahead and remove it because we know it's going nowhere, I'm fine with that, but not to. I don't want anybody to be confused that this is a real, in my view, due process, moral issue, but it's, he he is assured me that's going nowhere.
And and comes at the cost of local taxpayer.
Comes at the cost of the local taxpayer. We pick up the tag, local property tax dollars, and they and they, many of these people are not convicted of a crime. They're just booked into the jail. Apparently lose due process. It's wild to me, but you know, I don't write all the rules, so.
Okay, then, so these are just under General Cedric County. So first one, this made our. Amend K S A sixty four one oh one B to non uniform with respect to counties so that counties like cities would have the flexibility to consider alternative methods. Of publication in addition to traditional newspaper publication, which could result in. Next one, this came from Adam and Scott, renewal of sunflower summer program. We can certainly put it on our platform, but I thought that this might be something to consider for our.
A joint, I would agree. I, does everybody agree? I think that's better for the joint platform. Yeah.
Okay, this made our K C A. Thank you. Unilateral annexation, county has no representation, continue support for right of counties to vote on unilateral annexation similar to. What is permitted in K A S A twelve five twenty. This is also on last year's extend constitutional protections for county home rule authority. And then as well as last year, this one, remove K S A seventy nine sixteen thirteen property tax relief to the structures. Only thing I would ask is, do you want the corrections funding? Do you want that to be a part of it? Because I heard you. Kind of talk about that as you as you were discussing.
I I I think the prior, in my view, if I was looking at the entire platform and a lot of this is really important, but I think obvious elevations of significant needs are the corrections. Formula, which I'm hoping that we could. Get some agreement from the legislature very early in the session and then obviously what's going on for tag office. Not to say that none of this is, the rest isn't important, but I think those two things are of supreme importance of what's happening.
I would agree that the treasurer challenge is huge. The corrections challenge is huge and the. Sales tax redistribution is important. It's. And we could take one for the team to get to get the tag office and the corrections, but I like those three. And I think we're making an assumption that we checked with Jason, but the cremains bill, hopefully he was going to get that done. We don't, hopefully, we don't even have to have that on the. We can get that as we navigate through this. That's what, that would be my my opinion. If we're going to do three on a card, those would be the three. But there are others on there that are pretty. A little secondary important, but important. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other thoughts? I've still going to be working on this for about five months, so.
I I think the other, I I call both of those number one issues. So I have a third number one. I think the third number one, and I would, I think that. On the, under the appropriations, the support legislation for budget for the county appraiser, I guess I'd like to read. I'll have to change how I I'm asking for that. I would like to just bring wholly the entire office under the state's. Control. In other words, it should be a state appraiser's office, a state assessor's office, if you will. Again, it can be located located regionally in different counties or whatever. But in terms of funding, I I wish they would just fund it themselves. That's ideal. If they want to have local match or local support, they can certainly. Argue for that, but I would rather, again, in lieu of L A V T R. Who we lost. Why not give them the responsibility? I did the math on this. I think it's statewide. It's only like. What do we pay for our office currently?
Uh, the last year's actual expenditures were five point six million.
So take that times times six, if you will, so. You know, for a, for an entire state agency, if you if you will, if the state took it over, I know it seems like a lot of money, but. Roughly, you know, thirty to thirty five million dollars, this entire office moves back to the state, which is less than they spent on L A V T R. Entire state. So again, my point is, take something back. Rather than having sixteen things we have to do, make it fifty. Give them one back. That's my preference. And then along with that, my other, my my second part of number one, one B, is everything else under policy for the appraisers office. Make that comprehensive. So we have a comprehensive bill that does all those, all the six things under the policy piece. For the appraiser, for the appraisers office, because again, property taxes is our, I think, our number, one of our number one issues on. I I think that everything related to property taxes is under the appraisers office. The six things on page two and the one thing on page one ought to be comprehensive. If I was going to pick one more, I'd say community corrections, the three sixty seven. Middle point, there are corrections on page three. To me, we're getting close to getting that to pass. I just need help helping it through. So again, I would, I'd like to see those, those, at least those three items being our number one. And if you want to add a fourth, I'd say the corrections piece.
I'm I'm pretty much in agreement with Commissioner Howell. The 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 real estate appraisal piece I feel is very, very important. I do want to maybe stand back away from just scrolling over the keys to the state because real estate is local. And what's going on in the northeast part of the state is not always reflective of what's going on, which also I I I still. Wouldn't would want to have some control.
Tanya, this is day one of many on the legislative platform and we'll we'll work through these. Rather aggressively. Tanya, anything else? Lot of conversation today, a lot of important conversation today. So we have some follow up action items. We'll get to work on those and we'll see everybody on Friday. Okay, have a good one.